Commission meeting. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman?
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Marsters?
Present.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Present.
And Chair Harper Pedersen?
Present.
Now, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment is limited to items that are not on the current agenda. So, may I ask, is anybody here to speak on an item that is not on the listed agenda? Okay, seeing nobody, we'll go ahead and move on to the approval of the minutes. Do any of the commissioners have any changes or additions to the December 16th minutes?
I have a change on the 596 club issue. I recuse myself, so it should probably be 4-0 approval instead of 5-0 approval.
Yep, thank you. Any other changes or additions to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the minutes with those changes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, now, we're going to move on to our public hearing item, and just because I do see a lot of new people in the audience, I'll read this in its entirety. The procedure for the public hearing is, the staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, of the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will then make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed, and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those items you or someone else raised at a public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker card found by the door, hand it to staff, they will bring it up to me, and then the speaker should come up to the microphone since the meeting is recorded. This will assist in preparing the minutes. And our first and only item under public hearing is consideration of an appeal of Julia Orizam, property owner at 1933 Eaton Avenue, in regards to the RDRC's approval to allow continued construction on a garage wall approximately two feet from the property line located at 1937 Eaton Avenue pursuant to San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 1827-150A3. Okay?
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. My name is Lisa Porras, Principal Planner. I will be presenting the matter before you tonight, but before I get into the presentation, I would like to note to the commission that there has been a request made by Julia Orizam for a continuance, so the commission could either choose to determine whether or not it would allow a continuance, or if the commission would like me to go ahead and present the item, I'm happy to do either, and we are ready, you know, to move forward should the commission decide that. There were three emails, I believe, from Ms. Julia Orizam, property owner at 1933 Eaton Avenue. She is the appellant, of course, and those have been forwarded to the Planning Commission. And in addition, we received an email correspondence from the property owners at 1937 Eaton Avenue, George and Mary Lou DeScalzo, which has also been provided to the commission. I would also like to state, and I'm sure the city attorney can weigh in on this as well, there was a concern, if the commission decided to continue the item, would that still be consistent with the city's ordinance in terms of hearing the appeal item? And if the commission should choose to continue, that would be consistent with what the city ordinance would allow.
So, just for clarification, if I understand right, there's a 45-day window after an appeal is handed in to the city for the hearing to be scheduled but not necessarily decided upon. Am I correct in my interpretation, Greg?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Well, at this point, and I know that the commissioners have had a chance to review the emails, I think we should probably proceed in determining whether we should have a continuance before hearing anything else unless you guys would like to proceed in another direction. Okay. First, let me ask then, is the appellant present, Julia Orizam?
She's not here. August 2006.
Oh, interesting. Okay. Thank you, Al.
Do you have any hold music or anything we can play? So we don't have to, you know, sit in awkward silence. We can sit in slightly less awkward musical accompaniment? No?
Unless you would like to sing for us, perhaps.
I thought you'd never ask!
Could you rap for us instead? Yeah, it's more my thing.
I'm sorry, I, my rhymes are...
Your rhymes are...
They're not, yeah, they're not up to snuff.
You're right, I don't think we can handle your rhymes.
Can I point out a correction on staff?
Yeah, could you please?
Yes, sure, there's a, there needs to be a correction on staff, on the staff report to page three, top picture should say figure two, as opposed to figure one, there's two figure ones, and it's referenced as figure two on page two. So, it just needs to be changed.
Thank you, Jesse. Staff would agree that that needs to be changed.
I see what you mean. Well, tell me if this is appropriate, but while we're waiting for, to see if the appellant will be present, would it be appropriate to hear from, to hear from the property owner to see why they would prefer not to continue the item? Or is that something we should wait on?
I would just wait to get a report back from Mr. Savay whether the appellant is in the area, and then just start with everyone present.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have the music from Final Jeopardy going in their head? If not, then you go in a second.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Anytime.
Thanks for putting it there.
Yeah, you probably can. Final Jeopardy song. No, thank you.
Bet you, Jesse, I see you have some.
I'm good, I got water, thank you.
Do you want some water?
I'm fine, thanks.
Well, since the appellant is not present, I think, in order for us to consider the continuance, maybe we can hear from the property owner as to what difference two weeks would make as far as, as far as a delay in our decision.
Well, before we do that, I'm just kind of curious, if the appeal was filed by the appellant, from the staff report, it doesn't appear that she complied with the requirement to identify the issues that are subject to the appeal. Do we have to hear the appeal at all?
Well, I think, in these circumstances, my advice is to take whatever testimony is present, because the appeal is not simply, although I think you're right, technically there's no additional information, the appeal is in the form of a due process hearing, that we give the appellant the opportunity to present their case, and the members of the public are noticed of this, of this hearing, and if the members of the public would like to speak to it, they can speak to it, and then you close the hearing, and then you make your decision based upon the evidence.
As far as, like, hearing on the continuance, I'm happy to hear from the other side, but I mean, I'm willing to say right now, what I was inclined to do was move to tentatively deny the request for the continuance. Basically, what I was going to suggest is if the, if the appellant had, like, specific, a specific reason why she needed more time, then we could basically proceed with the appeal today and give her the amount of time that we determined that was reasonable additional if she presented a basis. But since she hasn't presented a basis for the appeal, I mean, for the, for the continuance, I mean, I'd be prepared to deny it right now without hearing from anyone else.
Well, I guess then that brings up two questions. One, can we tentatively deny, I mean, I guess, what would that, what would that...
At this point, I'm just saying deny, I mean, I move right now to deny the continuance. If she's not here to tell us why she needs more time, other than she wants more time, I'm prepared to deny the request for continuance right now.
Can I speak on this?
The, this is the issue of the continuance, so it's up to the chair, it looks like there's someone from the public who'd like to address the issue of the continuance, but the public hearing is really on the...
On the issue at hand.
On the issue at hand, so...
Right. I will say this, she, the applicant did submit emails requesting more time because of, because she was out of town for a significant amount of time and didn't feel she had time to prepare. Now, I'm paraphrasing from the emails that I have, so it isn't that she didn't give us any reason, but, but to your point on the reason for the appeal, I agree, that was, that was lacking as far as the application for the appeal, not necessarily for the continuance.
No, I understand. I read the emails, but what I need to know from her is how much more time she needed to prepare, what she needed to do during that time. I mean, you know, I understood that she wanted more time because she didn't feel like she had enough time to prepare, but what I needed to know in order to evaluate her request is what she was planning on doing in the additional time she was provided, how much additional time she needed, and we don't have that, which is why I'm prepared to deny it, but if someone wants to be heard...
Yeah, I'm inclined to hear the speaker from the public on the continuance item. If you'd come forward to the microphone, please. Just on the matter of the continuance at this point...
On an informal basis here, my name is Tim McEgan, I'm here helping her a little bit. Basically, what had happened is she did get contact with an attorney. Everything was, you know, because of the fact that we had Christmas and New Year's was closed, trying to get ahold of somebody while she was on a train back to Colorado, just didn't give her the time to contact this attorney, which she has done, and he couldn't make it over here today because, basically, he's in Walnut Creek. So, she said it'd probably take another, speaking with him, it'd probably take no more than 10 days.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, having heard, having heard that, then, I guess I'd like to hear from the commission as to whether you'd want to grant the continuance, or whether you'd want to hear all the information now and move forward.
She's here.
Oh. Hi there.
Hi.
In that case, hello. Hi. Oh, right to the microphone there. That's okay. And, David, can you restate your question to Julia so she understands what we're asking?
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, if you were given more time, what would you do with it, and how much more time do you need?
Well, I would certainly be able to be much better prepared. I, we received the notice of this hearing at my residence on the evening of the 20th. It was addressed to my husband, which is interesting, since I'm the one who's filing the appeal, and my husband is deceased. At any rate, we left on a train the crack of dawn the next morning for Denver, Colorado, for a holiday with my brother. So, we just got back into town, and so, it's been very difficult to prepare. For one thing, internet there in the mountains is horrible, and so, I've done the best I could to become prepared, but I would appreciate having more time to really have things together. I just grabbed what I could tonight, since I spoke with Lisa this afternoon, and she said that that decision would have to be made this evening and couldn't be made in advance of this time. So, she strongly suggested that I somehow get here. So, sorry, I'm a little out of breath. I am considering involving an attorney. I've spoken with Mr. Jonathan Bishop over in the East Bay, but I really do not want to go to that step. I think that the city is aware of what the codes are and what they're there to accomplish on behalf of the citizens of this city, and I'm hoping that that will not be necessary. So, I'm just asking for a bit more time to be prepared. I've grabbed what I could this evening to be here.
So, then, just a bit more time to review the information and...
Review all the information and make sure that I have down in a clear format what my concerns are specifically, and how it relates to the city's codes and ordinances that are there so that all of us can ensure our property.
Great. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Orizam about continuing the item at this point?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we're still confused as to what basis is the, I mean, what is your basis for the appeal?
Well, first of all, I was not notified of the hearing until the 20th of December. Everyone here is well aware that the schools are out on that very same day, and families make plans to be gone. So, I've been gone, I have three children, two of whom are in school in the San Carlos School District, one in high school, and with my husband dying the end of October, I felt that it would be a much better Christmas if we got out of Dodge, so to speak. So, we left on Amtrak the following morning, and, you know, I could not change the reservations, and I did not think it was in the best interest of my family to do so. So, we were gone for two weeks and just got back very late on Friday.
I think, just to clarify...
So, the basis for the appeal, not the continuance?
Yeah, I think...
That's my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. It's okay.
I'm sorry, you were asking about the basis for the appeal?
Correct.
Well, I put together a list of items of concern. Do you want me to go through that?
Would that be something, I guess I would throw that to staff, would that be something that are heard in a minute, or is that something, is that something the commissioners need to know to consider the continuance?
Yeah, that would be the question.
I want to, I would like to get started with the appeal today. No matter what, I'd like to hear from staff, I'd like to hear from the people who are here today, and then, after that, I think that I'll be in, after that, after the appellant has had an opportunity to explain what the basis for the appeal is, and what she would do with more time, at that point, I think, if it appeared to me that she needed more time, then I would be prepared to give her some more time, but as of right now, I'm not prepared to do that.
I'm fine with that, too.
Okay. Well, in that case, Julia, thank you. We'll go ahead and have a seat at this point, and then we'll have staff do the presentation. We'll hear from you again with the list of the, of the appeal concerns, and then we'll hear from the property owner, and we'll move on from there. Thank you very much.
So, we had a motion, and we seconded for, to deny the, or are we going to put that on hold?
Can we table that for now?
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't know that was an actual motion.
I was, I was making the motion, but I think that it's okay to table it for now, if that's okay.
Okay, good evening, Chair, Commissioners, members of the public. My name, again, is Lisa Porras, I'm the Principal Planner here at the City of San Carlos, and the item before you tonight concerns the property at 1937 Eaton Avenue. The appellant is Julia Orizam, who lives next door to the property at 1933 Eaton Avenue. And, just to restate, the item before the Planning Commission is consideration of an appeal filed by Julia Orizam in regards to the RDRC, the Residential Design Review Committee's decision to allow continuation of construction of a garage wall located at 1937 Eaton Avenue. The garage wall is approximately two feet from the property line located at 1937 Eaton Avenue. Just to get everyone oriented, I'm sure most folks know the area that we are referring to, but just in case, the location of the property currently under construction at 1937 is on Eaton Avenue. It's located on a 12,750 square foot lot on the south side of Eaton Avenue, on the block of Eaton between Park Avenue to the west and Cedar Street to the east. The general plan land use designation for the property is single-family and has an accompanying zoning district of RS, single-family. The site, as I mentioned, is currently under construction for additions to both the first and second stories of the pre-existing home, which was a pre-existing home, which was approved by the RDRC in October of 2012. The county assessor's information and records state that the pre-existing home, including the garage and garage wall in question, was built in 1936. So, what occurred with respect to this property, again, in October of 2012, the RDRC approved a 1,500, approximately 1,500 square foot addition to an existing home. As part of the plans that were reviewed, there was a pre-existing garage wall located approximately two feet, in some cases, almost three feet, from the property line shared with 1933 Eaton Avenue. That was depicted on the architectural drawings, and the architectural drawings indicated that the garage and guest room wall, they're essentially the same wall, the guest room extending further, deeper into the property, along the side yard, the shared property line between 1937 and 1933 Eaton Avenue, that that wall would remain. This matter was heard by the RDRC, it was approved, no appeals were filed on that decision, and subsequently, a building permit was issued in June 2013. In approximately early October, myself, as well as the building official, received a couple of phone calls from Julia Orizam indicating that there was work being done on the garage wall. So, staff went out to the site and confirmed the condition of the garage wall, and there's a picture provided in your staff report. Because the original plans did not indicate that the garage and guest room wall would have work being done to it, staff decided it would be most appropriate to refer the item back to the RDRC to decide whether to allow continued construction of that particular wall. This matter was scheduled for the RDRC in November, and the RDRC made a decision to allow continued construction, and after hearing some of the concerns from Julia Orizam, notably privacy concerns, they had a discussion on whether a fence could help ameliorate those privacy concerns. And further, in its decision, the RDRC further required that a new fence be constructed by the DeScalzos, the owners of the property at 1937 Eaton Avenue, with a style to be determined by both neighbors. Subsequently, an appeal was filed on December 2nd by Julia Orizam. Even the decision of the RDRC on just that item, whenever an item is brought in back, it's still subject to the appeal process that the city allows. In the next couple of slides, I just want to kind of take a closer look as what was reviewed and approved. In the staff report and depicted on this PowerPoint slide is the floor plan of the garage and guest room wall, and as you can see on the plans right here, this line here, according to the legend, states that the existing wall would remain. The side yard setback that was measured on the plans indicate that it was approximately two to three feet from the property line, and the garage was considered at the time to be non-conforming with the current requirement of four or five-foot side yard setback for construction within the RS6 zoning district. Now, the zoning ordinance does allow for additions and enlargements of non-conforming structures, provided that the addition portion and the enlargement area does comply with the code, but because no work was being done, this was consistent with what the ordinance would allow, and it was approved by the RDRC, and again, no appeals were filed. Subsequently, a, an additional set of plans were submitted to the Building Division, which is, we typically refer to as the Building Permit Plan Set, which will include architectural drawings, structural drawings, electrical drawings, landscape plans, et cetera. Within the Building Permit Plan Set, as you can see here, again, we see that the guest room and garage wall, again, is intended to remain in place. However, upon further review of the structural drawings, staff found that the Building Plan Set within the structural drawing sections, it does indicate that construction for the garage and guest room wall would either be using existing materials, if they could use it, or use new materials. And the zoning ordinance does allow for continuation of a non-conforming setback, provided that 50% of the material remains and is not removed as part of the scope of work for the addition. In particular, with the guest room, it states, in the structural drawings, it states that the foundation, for the foundation, they would use either new or existing. Upon a site visit, we confirmed that it was appropriate to use new material, or the contractor determined that, to, in order to have a structurally sound, you know, wall and portion of the building, that new material would need to be used. The structural drawings for the garage area... And the structural drawings for the garage area indicate that they would use the existing foundation and, but employing new sheer walls and studs. The building official is here tonight. He can probably best describe these issues in details, should you have any questions on that. So, that's how we got to where we are today. Structural drawings are typically sent out for review by a contract firm. So, staff was not aware of the discrepancy between the Architectural Plan Set and the Structural Drawing Set that was together combined in the Building Permit Plan Set that was reviewed and approved by the city. When we took this matter to the RDRC in November, recently in November, there were several concerns expressed. The RDRC members, or some of the members, asked whether an increased setback for that garage wall would reduce the size of the garage. And it would. The garage, right now, measures, or previously measured, 19 by 20, which is just a foot under the city's requirement for a 20 by 20-foot garage. The RDRC members asked if a survey had been completed. The property owners at the time said they did prepare a survey. There was questions about, you know, what the, onsite, you know, were there stakes in the ground? Was it easily available for someone to see where the property line had been staked? So, there was discussions about the location of the property line. In your packet, there is a staking exhibit that was subsequently submitted and is references a three-foot setback where that line would be drawn. Additional concerns heard from Ms. Orizam had to do with privacy issues. There was, I guess, ample discussion on previous decision, the previous decision that the RDRC made back in October 12. Having heard all of those issues, the RDRC unanimously decided to allow continued construction of the garage wall, provided that no materials would be further removed and that a fence be constructed. For this hearing tonight, a public notice was sent out to property owners within 300 feet of the site. Staff has exchanged emails with the appellant and with the property owners of 1937 Eaton Avenue regarding their request for continuance and confirmed that any kind of continuance is really up to the Planning Commission, and staff cannot, cannot on its own, decide to continue an item. There's also, as I mentioned at the opening of this public hearing item, the email correspondence that has been given to the Planning Commission. And as of this point, staff has received no further comments or questions in writing specific to the appeal being considered tonight. Before I conclude, there are a couple of other factors to consider as we look where we're at and how we got here. Based on the condition of the existing wall and foundation, upon further review, the building official has determined that in order to construct a structurally sound wall that meets the requirements of the building code, new materials would have to be used in that particular area of the wall, or along that entire wall. Other factors to consider is that the subject wall has been in place for 78 years. It was part of the original plans that had constructed the home back in 1936. The wall in question would not be lengthened or changed in any way. It just would be built, if allowed, by the Planning Commission, would be allowed to be in its exact same position as it's been for the past 78 years. And also to note is that if the commission chose to require a five-foot sideyard setback, that would further reduce the size of the garage from 19 by 20 to about 16 by 20 in As the staff report indicates, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission uphold the RDRC Committee's approval pertaining to the property located at 1937 Eaton Avenue for the retrofit of the non-conforming garage wall approximately two to three feet from the property line, and that the fence with a style to be agreed upon by the property owners be constructed by the Descalzos. Also, in your staff report, there are several alternatives being presented before you for consideration. One is to deny the appeal and uphold the RDRC's decision. The other is to uphold the appeal of Julia Orizam, which would require, potentially require constructing the wall at five feet from the property line, or you could provide staff with alternative direction. I have a couple of images that I'd just like to share with the commission, and these will be available, and I can draw these, bring these back up if the discussion moves forward and you need to see them. This drawing here is from the Design Review Plan Set that was considered and approved by the RDRC back in October 2012. The garage wall that we're talking about tonight, and as the matter of the appeal, is located here. This is an elevation of that garage wall, as shown in the plan submitted to the RDRC here. This is the perspective submitted within the Building Permit Plan Set. You will note a change in the roof style, if you look at the garage roof in this image versus the image submitted to the Building, Building Division for a building permit. That was considered insignificant by staff, and staff approved, signed off on the plans. This is a depiction of the elevation as it would appear with that modified roof design, as opposed to what the RDRC saw. And I will inform the commission that a change order was submitted in August last year to fill in a porch area, the first floor porch area. So, I'll go back right here and show you that porch area. So, basically, the change order would allow the property owners to construct this wall a little bit further out, which does meet the front yard setback requirements and other requirements of the code. And then, again, this is the image that you all have in your staff report regarding the condition of the garage and guest room wall as staff photographed it during the site visit, take, in October earlier, or, excuse me, last year. So, if you have any questions, I'm available. The building official is here tonight, and I believe the appellant, obviously, is here, as well as the Descalzos and their architect and contractor. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Lisa at this point?
Yeah, I have a question. The, having the wall moved down, the studs is considered officially the 50, at 50%, so we're keeping it within the guidelines or the code as far as--
That's correct. That's my understanding, and I think the building official can confirm that. But that's been the past practice with the city.
Okay. Thank you.
So, my question has to do with the back half of the garage wall, which is really the side of the guest room, which has been completely redone with a new foundation.
That's correct.
Is that taken into consideration as part of the 50%?
Yes, it is. I mean, what happened is, is the structural drawings do indicate that work was going to be done on that guest room wall and foundation area, that the contractor would either use existing or new. And the contractor is here tonight, and perhaps they can inform us as the condition of that particular, you know, portion of the home and why they needed to utilize new materials. So, we have a situation, on one hand, where the contractor was building according to the, to the building permit that they received. There was a discrepancy with the Architectural Plan Set and the Structural Drawings. Being where we are now, which is, I haven't visited the site recently, but this is the last image that I saw of it, the question is how we go forward. And given the current condition, which is, you know, the garage wall with the studs exposed, moving forward with that in mind would be consistent with the past practice of the city.
So, just to clarify, then, the, and maybe Chris would be better to answer this, but the past practice of the city is to allow, is to allow the property owner to go down to the studs?
If need be. You know, oftentimes, as, you know, when you're doing construction work, you can either utilize some of the materials that are existing, but perhaps during work, they discover that there would need to be further work done to that area than might have been anticipated.
Does that typically also include removal of the roof and removal of the garage floor?
Did you want to speak for that? I'll invite Chris to come up.
All right, Chris Valley, Building Official. Let me just back up for a moment, that the approved plans, even with the structural, still showed the garage wall remaining. So, it was never really a red flag through plan review. It still showed a, you know, good faith intent of preserving 50% of that wall area. So, it never came up in plan review. But to answer your question, which was, one more time, please?
When you say 50%, so essentially, they've got a handful of studs there. But the way the, the reading of the ordinance talks about is within the non-conforming area, a minimal of 50% of the exterior wall and 50% of the roof remains and is not removed as part of the scope of the work for the addition. All the roof has been removed, and the floor of the garage has also been removed. And I wondered, is that typical as, in considering this 50%?
I'd have to admit that within my 17 years of working here, this is really a, I believe, a first of this type of example, where, you know, this much, for whatever reason, given how old the houses or whatnot, was, was removed. And at my site visit with this residence, revealed that, you know, the foundation is not reinforced. You can just see the notches in the studs and so forth. We just simply have a structure that's, its useful lifespan in that area has been used up. And so, that's kind of why this came back to planning to begin with and such, to, you know, make a good faith effort here to address the, the lack of existing material to work with, structurally and so forth.
So, is the expectation is that that wall is eventually going to be removed? I mean, can, can somebody continue building with those notches in the two-by-fours that are part of that wall?
You could sister on, you could sister two-by-fours alongside the existing two-by-four, but quite frankly, the primary concern on, on my part and the building inspector's part that's been out there, and I believe even the contractor, is the foundation itself. It's, to what degree that's salvageable, we have yet to see a revised set of plans to salvage that.
Interesting.
So, even if we approved it, it, even if we denied the appeal, there's a good possibility that that foundation and those studs will still have to be removed?
In my professional opinion, I do not see that as a salvageable wall, without a whole lot of engineering being thrown at it, which, again, we have not seen yet. So, at least in plan supplemental.
Okay. And so, the other question I had concerned the back half, I mean, the back half of that wall is pretty much gone. So, my understanding of the 50% was that it included pretty much the entire wall, 50% going down to the studs for that wall. So, when you look at the back half there, my concern is that there's a new foundation and new entire wall there.
That, and, and that's per the approved plans? Again, given the assumption that the forward portion of the garage wall, the garage wall itself is to be preserved. At, you know, so the garage wall itself is actually more than 50% of the total linear distance of the wall. And the approved plans showed that wall in particular being salvaged.
So, I guess here's a question, and this might be better directed at Lisa or even Greg and Al. If, if the existing, if we deny the appeal, what we're doing is approving the RDRC's decision, which required that the current materials are currently used. Now, would removal of the rest of this structure trigger an automatic five-foot setback requirement? I don't know who to ask that question to.
Well, we, staff discussed this very issue because of the concerns raised by the building official. And it, it's really up to the, the owner's contractor to comply with, with our rules. And we looked at it from a common sense standpoint, and what was the intent of the rule. We, we acknowledge that there might be circumstances when there would be some deficiencies in the materials that would require later replacement. But the intent of this provision on the grandfathering of setbacks is really to allow a property owner who has an existing setback situation such as this to maintain that setback within the constraints of the, of the ordinance. And it's staff's interpretation and past practice that this situation is something that's contemplated by the code, that there would be a wall within a setback period, or setback, and that there might need to be some improvement to, whether it's sistering, whether it's pouring the foundation at a sequencing that means that the wall doesn't fall over. I think we'd be in a different scenario if this wall had fallen over. I mean, it sounds very technical, but that's really what the rule is.
Further questions for Chris or Lisa?
Yeah, Lisa, can you put up that original diagram of the, that shows the guest suite? Because it looks to me like the guest wall, the sidewall of that guest suite was also supposed to remain. And that's sort of not what I'm hearing from Chris. So, in each one of these diagrams, the guest suite wall also is supposed to remain. And that has been completely removed all the way. And so, that's, that's where I'm having a little bit of trouble here, is, is, you know, saying that, you know, we're down to a few studs here and, you know, that, that's the piece that I have a problem with.
I'm sorry, is there a particular question?
Am I missing something? Because Chris was saying that that wall was supposed to, was, was supposed to be replaced at some point.
The structural and the architectural are different, is what the issue is.
I don't understand, like, if you have a rotten wall, you can't replace it? I mean, I don't--
Well, that's why the code is written, to allow areas with nonconformity to be worked upon. It allows removal of some of the materials and the wall to, you know, would allow, would allow an existing non-conforming wall to remain.
And, and I think what I've heard from, from, from both you and Chris is that past precedent has allowed, like, the 50% seems to be ambiguous, I guess, and that it's allowed it to--
Well, I would agree with Chris, that the condition, where we're at today is, is not typical. If this were any other, were in any other place within the site that wasn't next to a sideyard setback, or there wasn't nonconforming, you know, we would say, well, that wall's unsound, go ahead and rebuild it, and that would be done. The issue is because of the location of the wall. And it's, you know, it's, no pun intended, but it is a fine line. We felt that it was appropriate, given the condition of the wall, to take it back to the RDRC. And, and I would reiterate that indeed, you know, going down the studs has been the city's past practice. But rather than having staff make that decision and allow the property to continue construction, this property has been on hold since October, the contractor and property owners have instructed not to touch that area, we felt it best to take it forward to the RDRC to have, you know, a process, an open process where people could, neighbors could attend and make their case before the RDRC.
Okay.
And just to clarify to Commissioner Marster's question, staff's interpretation is that more than 50% of the wall in the non-conforming area remains after, even with the replacement of the wall with that back bedroom. Because it's, if you look at the distances, more than, the garage segment is, is more than 50% of the entire segment.
At this point, are there any further questions for Lisa or Chris or staff? And if there are no further questions, I think at this point, we'd like to hear from the appellant. Is that the appropriate way to proceed at this point? Is that the appropriate way to proceed at this point?
Normally, we do hear from the appellate first in these circumstances.
Great, okay. Thank you very much, Lisa and Chris. Ms. Orizom, would you like to come forward? Thank you.
A couple of things. One thing is that I submitted a photograph to the prior meeting showing that the entire garage had been torn down. The structure that you see there in the photograph was put back up at a later date after my husband and I raised concerns about what was going on. The two chunks of concrete that are seen there as foundation were pulled out of the dumpster and put back in location, and the two-by-fours were constructed on top of that with a roof line that clearly is not the original roof line, because the roof line was not at that angle. The angle that you see in the photograph is rotated 45 degrees from the way it was originally. In other words, there was a hip facing my property at 1933. That photograph clearly shows a different style of roof, rotated 45 degrees, where there would not be a hip on our side of the property. So obviously, it's not the original wall. We have a photograph showing that the entire garage was demolished, and that was included in the prior meeting.
Do you have the photo with you?
I don't, I have it in my camera. Lisa has it in the materials previously submitted. Also, there were, the minutes of the prior meeting included a statement by the contractor that he had torn down the entire garage and should not have. That section of the minutes was eliminated, that section of the meeting was eliminated from the minutes that were provided to me, and so I'm assuming that that was also eliminated from the minutes that were provided to you. Also, in the code, it clearly states that, that, let's see, excuse me, this is why I'm saying it's very difficult to be adequately prepared, because this is very detailed, so I'm doing the best I can. Zoning Ordinance D1, setback needs to be five feet, let's see, unless 50% of the garage wall and 50% of the roof are kept. They were, all of it was completely knocked down. And it does say in the ordinance D2 that the setback in any case cannot be less than three feet. And that's including, you know, the grandfathered situation. In any case, it can't be less than three feet. At the back corner of the guest room, I have a photograph with me where I measured it, and it is 21 inches from the property line. And this is what initially raised my own concerns, is when the entire backs, the entire back room, the guest room, the guest suite, as it's termed in the plans, that entire back room was completely taken out and all the concrete in the foundation was removed. And when they dug a new trench to put in the new foundation and poured the new foundation, I looked at it and was very concerned about the proximity to the property line. At that point, we did not even know where the property line was, because that material had been requested from the owners at 1937, and we still did not have it. That property, the property line, I repeatedly asked that it be staked so that we could see where it actually was in relationship to the structure, because that's what really means something after all. And it was done three or four days before we left town, so that would have been December 16th, 15th, something like that. It was not done until that point. And at that, one of the stakes broke off and fell over, and the other one had to go underneath our gate to the backyard, and so it was really impossible to stretch it in a straight line to tell. But at any rate, the property line actually goes at an angle between the two houses, so they're not square to the property line. And therefore, the property line actually shoots into, beyond the fence that the Descalzos erected in the backyard. So it's kind of hard to visualize it, I guess. I drew my own little picture here where there's roughly 36 inches at the front corner of the garage between the rubble that's there, it's kind of hard to measure it accurately, it may be more like 32 or 3, but anyway. And then there's 45 inches to the garage wall on our property. At the back, toward the back of the property, then, to the property line, there's only 21 inches from the current foundation, the new foundation that was poured, to the property line. And we have six feet, four inches on our side, that's our property. So that line goes through at an angle, it's interrupted, as a matter of fact, by the fence that currently exists. So therefore, if that line were staked completely, which is what I've requested, that the whole property line be staked, the property line actually goes inside of the Descalzos fence, so therefore, we probably have another foot or so.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but are you talking about the construction fence?
No, I'm talking about the pre, I'm talking about the pre-existing fence.
Pre-existing, oh, I see, okay, thank you.
Sorry, yeah, to make that clear. So what I'm saying is, it's really hard to get an accurate line.
Sure.
Because there's, the fence is in the way, my gate is in the way. But at any rate, as close as I could, I've measured it, and I have a photograph here showing the tape measure from the new concrete wall in the back edge of the guest room to the property line, and you can see that it is less than two feet, it is 21 inches. Okay, so I've had that here. And then this is a photograph, actually, there is one in your slides that shows the reconstructed wall. The whole wall was down, and we have a photograph of that. This was put up by the contractor after we expressed concerns. And then the other photograph I have... Are you still holding the photograph? Are you still holding a photograph, because I brought three? The other one that I have is showing, sorry, oh, here it is, is showing the distance from the property line to our back corner, which is six feet, four inches. So I'll give you these, and you can even have...
While we're looking at the photos, I do have a quick question, since you've been talking about staking in the property line. Have you seen the staking exhibit that was a part of the plaque, the packet for the...
Right, yes, I have seen that, and I had requested a copy of it from the surveyor and actually just was able to get that today. So you can see the property line going through on an angle. At any rate, I think it's important that the entire property line be staked, so we know what we're talking about. And I may even have to knock my gate down in order to be able to do it, because the structure of the fence is in the way. But I think the main thing is that, in any case, according to the city's ordinance D2, the setback has to be at least three feet. It can't be less than three feet. And the back corner, as it's been reconstructed of that guest room, which was completely taken out, is currently 21 inches. In addition, I'll just mention that the original structure was not the same height, it was lower, and the, if you notice, I don't know the construction terms, the sill or whatever. Anyway, the base of the floor is going to be up, I believe about a foot and a half higher than it was before. I'm sure there are construction reasons for that. But in addition, I do have concerns about the original design of the roof, which was approved, was supposed to be the same roof design as originally existed on the structure and would have been, had the 50% of the roof been retained, but it was not. And so therefore, the roof has been subsequently redesigned so that there is a solid face on our side of the property, which is going to go up, I don't know how high, very high, it must be, you know, close to 20 feet plus or minus, which is very imposing from our side of the property. The hip that was originally on that, the side facing our property, there was a hip, which greatly reduces the impact of a tall structure. So I think the roof redesign is also a big concern, and we did not know anything about any of the redesign phases that took place, because the planning commission decided that it was not significant enough to notify the neighbors.
Planning staff.
The planning staff, I'm sorry. So at any rate, the major changes, there were major changes on our side of the property, as you saw. You know, there were originally overhanging balcony, which echoed our house and kept the structure back and decreased the bulk of the structure. Now, all of that has been filled in, so the whole structure is closer to us, and so the impact of what's happening on our side is significant, and I really feel that we should have been notified. I can see how, from across the street, and also from the property, the adjoining property on the other side, that there really wasn't much to be concerned about. If you notice from the photographs, the home on the opposite side of the Descalzo residence is separated from the Descalzos by a greenbelt and a driveway and a significant side yard. So they are, there's much less impact there, but on our side, our driveways are parallel to each other, the garages are right next to each other, and in addition, there is this very small amount of space between the two garages. So I really think that constructing a fence, if the Descalzos construct a fence, they would have to be constructing it on their side of the property, I'm assuming. So with 21 inches, that fence is going to be sitting less than 21 inches from the edge of the property, and currently, that structure is going to be a foot and a half taller at the back corner, but significantly taller at the peak because of the change in the roof style. So that's a really major change from the perspective of our home.
Thank you. I'd like to ask if there are, I feel like there are some questions from the commissioners for the appellant at this point.
I have one question. How do you feel that putting the wall or letting the wall go up in the place where it originally existed is harming, is causing you harm? But what is it, what is your, I mean, if it stays the same, how are you worse off than you are today?
Well, I think it's really a lack of knowledge situation. We did not know where the property line was. We were told that we had three feet and they had three feet. However, since the survey's been done, it shows that we have more space than that and they have less. And the harm that's being done is that we're not following the ordinance. The ordinances are here to protect the enjoyment of everyone in terms of their property, and you're supposed to have a minimum of three feet, no matter what. And in addition, the height of the structure is going to be significantly taller than it was before. And the windows in that back bedroom are going to be higher, so they're going to be looking directly into our backyard. In addition to loss of privacy, there's also loss of sunlight and just the weight of that structure right next to our house. So that's the harm. I think if we have codes, the intention is that we follow them. And I do believe that the city has been very meticulous about this in the past. I'm, I've been a resident of San Carlos for 41 years, moved here in 1972 with my family, and I've seen a lot of projects going up, and I've never seen anything like this. I've had neighbors walking by and going, aren't you trying to do something? Because they're seeing what the impact is visually with our property, and as I said, not so much the other side, because they've got a lot more space in the front, they've got a more, they've got more width to their property. But on our side, the impact is significant.
Let me ask quickly at this point, because the appellant had brought up a question about the zoning ordinance, and I wanted some clarification at this point. Ms. Orizom had said that the setback can't be less than three feet, and I was also reading through the interpretations, and I just wanted some clarification. Is that correct? That even, even in nonconforming situations, that...
That's not the staff's interpretation of the code.
Okay.
The code is, it doesn't read that, in no case, it cannot, let me see, I have it right here.
It does say verbatim, in any case, no less than three feet.
That's within the nonconforming section? If this house was demolished and rebuilt, this section provides that the side yard setback could be no less than three feet?
Actually, through the chair, may I? I'm sorry, I know I should have asked this before, but I just, it just occurred to me, and this is, I'm sure, a stupid question. Why are we even looking at 18.19.050? Shouldn't we be looking at 18.19.040? I mean, 050 is for additions and enlargements, 040 is for continuation and maintenance of nonconforming structures. It seems like 040 is a better fit for this situation than 050, and if so, then the only question would be whether or not the change was more than 50% of the value. And again, I apologize, I'm not, I, this was not a gotcha situation, I was just looking again at the, at the ordinance code, and it just, it, what struck me as odd was, if you read 050 and you look at 050, and 050 applies here, then you basically can't repair a wall. And that seems bizarre to me. So are we looking at the wrong section?
I've just reviewed the section. We don't believe we're looking at the wrong section, because one is continuance and maintenance of, and the other is for additions, and this is clearly an addition. However, I'll just clarify on this, on this three-foot setback issue.
Yes, please.
You know, there are many circumstances in San Carlos where there's, where structures are actually across the property line. And the, our interpretation of the code is that circumstance, being within three feet or being across the property line, cannot be intended and was not intended to prevent anyone from doing an addition to that house, because it's across a property line or within the setback. Otherwise, we'd always be having to require that. And our interpretation of the municipal code is to allow the continuing existence of what's there now, not to prohibit or require reconstruction to maintain this three-foot setback. With that provision, my interpretation of that provision about the three-foot is to not create a vested right to keep something within three feet of a property line. If there's a future addition where somebody, for example, proposes to remove more than 50% of the nonconformity, we are not going to allow something in that circumstance less than the three feet, but we're never going to allow a grandfathering of two feet in, for instance, a total destruction of the house in a fire or something of that circumstance, unless there's a specific exception for that in the code, I think there may be for that hypothetical. But I think it's a statement that we're not trying to create a vested right to something within the three feet, is what... within the three feet, is what that second clause is.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
You'll ask.
Again, on, on 040 versus 050. I understand that there is additions being done to the property. But there are, are there additions being done to the garage and to the, uh, to the, the guest area? Because I thought you were telling me that there weren't any additions, that it was basically the same exact wall. Um, I mean, I understand they changed the roof line, but with the exception of the change of the roof line, they're basically, from what I'm understanding, just rebuilding the same structure. And to me, that looks like a continuance and maintenance and not an addition. I recognize addition is going on elsewhere. Just the hypothetical, and I apologize. It's like, so if they decided to do this in stages, and first they did the additions, and then they, uh, had decided to rebuild the garage and the, um, and the, uh, the guest house, it clearly would be 040, wouldn't it? So why is it converted?
If they staged the project in that way, I think I, I'm following your hypothetical.
So then why, just because they happen to do it all at once, does that change become a, an 050 situation rather than 040? It just isn't, I mean, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, there's some common sense. I, I understand exactly where you're coming from. And, and interpreting the ordinance with the basic intent that we have an exception to the setback requirements where there's something that's existing, and, uh, we thought that 050 was the most appropriate, given the, the scope of the addition and that it included this area.
But the problem is they took off the roof. So, I mean, they took off the entire roof. So if we're applying 050, and 050 says, "You must leave 50% of the roof," we have a problem, right? I mean, they took off the whole roof. It's gone. So I don't see how we can, um, can you help me out here?
Well, there was a, the decision, um, and I wasn't there at the, at the staff level when the decision was made, but, um, I thought I heard in the staff report that there was a decision made, um, that the design of the roof could be changed, and that's what happened with that.
Well, then how is it the same?
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, just, just to clarify a couple of things. I guess first of all, just to backtrack just for a brief moment, the photographs, um, that Ms. Orzum referred to, um, at the beginning of her statement, were provided to staff on November the 18th, the day that the RDRC heard the matter. Um, I provided those photographs to the RDRC. They looked at them, there wasn't any discussion on those photographs.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and then secondly, I'd just like to clarify that the guest room portion of the, um, approved addition, um, had an addition to it. So the guest room was kind of, it kind of, if you look at the original, uh, floor plans, it was indent, it was indented, indented in the rear, in the backyard area. So basically, um, the RDRC approved plans and building plan set shows that the addition just being squared off in the back. So there was an addition done to that guest room, which was probably, probably, um, previously a, um, storage area.
I actually remember that from the original, from the original design in, in 12. I don't know if you guys all have that, though, but there's a, there is a section in the back guest room that's specifically infilled, so it is an addition. Sorry, that didn't occur to me earlier. Um, at this point, though, since Ms. Orzum is up, does anybody have any additional questions for Ms. Orzum at this point?
Other than, obviously, you want to be, and, and I'm sorry, first of all, I'm sorry for your loss.
Thanks.
Uh, other than having more time to get organized, is there something that you believe that you could present if you were given more time that you can't present today?
Well, I'm, I'm really, um, a bit confused about a number of the issues that have been brought up here in terms of one set of codes versus another set of codes, and what, what impact all of that has on the decision that you make and, um, what, and my own interpretation of it, and how, whether I feel that, um, that I understand the decision. Uh, this is pretty complicated material, really. And, um, and the only codes that I have are the ones that, that planning, uh, provided to me. And according to those codes, it seems like what has occurred is not right. Um, the entire garage was taken down, not just the, all the walls, the roof, the concrete was all broken up and hauled off. Every bit of that garage was torn down. Same thing with the guest room. And you're right, it was more of a storage closet with a passageway through, and then I think there was maybe a small bathroom. So there was an area that was filled in to make it more of a usable room, which made sense. Um, uh, but what doesn't make sense to me is the fact that originally, those two structures were to remain essentially the same, but they are not the same.
I just want to finish this, I'm sorry. But other, other than wanting more ti, is there any information that you would like to present that you can't present tonight?
I'm sorry, uh, could you say that?
Sure. Is there any additional information that you would like to present that you cannot present tonight?
Well, I, I would like to be able to review the, the actual codes and the difference between the two. As I understand, there's a different set of codes if you're remodeling, there's a different set of codes if you're rebuilding. Uh, in this case, it's rebuilding.
Anything else?
Um, and, and I would like to be able to consult with, uh, with an attorney about whether he feels, or she feels, that, uh, what's occurring is appropriate or not. And I, and I can't do that unless I have some more time.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So, I, my question for you is, um, sort of the end game, okay?
Okay.
Um, what, what are you looking to get out of this? Okay? Um, do you want them to move the wall back? Um, obviously, the RDRC suggested a fence, okay? Um, one of the things that I, when I, I read through this, I understand your situation. I, I, um, I, I have a tough time with the 50%. I, I see that. I see that you have a concern with the garage roof. You've mentioned windows and loss of privacy. When I actually looked at the plans, I actually see that they've done a very good job of not having windows that face your house. Certainly, there's almost nothing on the ground floor, and the windows that I saw on the, the second floor are much smaller than the existing windows that were there to begin with. Um, I did notice the balcony out there, and I was a little, um, wondering about why the balcony didn't show up on one of the, the drawings up there. But sort of the, the question I came up, the, the question I have would be, um, if they changed the roof of the garage back to the way it was prior?
Mm-hmm.
And a fence was put up? Is the, are those types of things acceptable to you? Or are you expecting that they're going to move the garage completely and tear down the guest room and move that also?
Um, I think that certainly the changes to the roof line would make, would make the addition much more palatable from our side. Um, and in regards to the windows, it's, it's kind of hard to tell at this point. There's one very large window, it appears to be a window, that is looking directly into our dining room. Um, and I'm not sure where that window is inside the structure or what the plan is, but actually, from the second floor, it's more of an intrusion than it would have been from the ground floor because they're looking down directly into our dining room. Um, the windows in the back of the house, I think the, the guest room windows before were not an intrusion, but now with the structure being lifted up, um, higher, those windows look directly into our backyard, whereas before, sorry, before, um, the windows could not really look into our backyard.
The proposed remodel plan that I see here has no windows in that side of the, um, the, uh, there.
Yeah, I'm talking about the rear-facing wall.
And then that.
If you go back that wall and just directly around that corner, there's a window that looks directly into our backyard, unless I'm not interpreting what I see currently being instructed correctly.
Oh, you mean for the guest room garage?
In the guest room.
I see.
So it's on the, on the back wall, it's not the side wall that you?
Yeah, just, just around the corner, so.
We do have some photos that are going on our turn to see what those.
Yeah. Yeah. Because when you, when you look at this, um, this has a lot fewer windows, and there doesn't seem to be a balcony on the second floor up here. Is that the case, or?
Yes, through the chair, that, that's.
Revised, has removed that whole balcony there.
Right, and there's been some changes. There's stairs windows too, there's only one window upstairs. As you look at the side on the far left, there's only one window in the bathroom now. And actually, the, the windows that you're seeing now, we actually took it down a foot, so it's six feet, I mean, it's five feet and going back down the floor.
I am gonna, um, I'm gonna ask that we have to come up if you want to talk about the windows further.
I, I do. I just, I want her to, to see the, the revised plan that's up there because it doesn't contain a lot of windows that actually, um, look into your privacy, from, from my point of view, anyway.
Mm-hmm. I think, uh, the only thing is that the, the, I don't know where that central window is. If you look back from the front of the property, the, to the corner, there's a straight line down, and then beyond that, the longest window there, that's a six-pane window, I'm not sure where that is on the inside.
That's the bathroom upstairs and bathroom back.
Okay.
Typically, the way we address these types of issues is landscaping, okay? So if you want to address the window from a neighbor's house, you or they plant a tree or something that.
There's a huge tree that blocks.
It would, it would have to be.
Yeah, it's all trees.
It would, it would have to be an awfully tall tree.
Hold on, you guys.
It, it would have to be an awfully tall tree.
I will say, if you guys do look at the landscaping, there, there actually, instead of a fence, there is a bunch of trees, uh, bordering both of their properties, but.
Through the, through the chair, um, um, just to clarify, to get us back on track, the appeal is about the two-foot setback issue.
It's about the garage.
It's not about redesigning.
Right.
The entire house, so.
Right.
Just wanted to be clear about what was appealed.
And I, and I do, um, I appreciate your point, Scott, because ultimately, you want to know what, what would make the, the appellant happy. So inevitably, I see how that conversation leads to the window conversation, but we do have to, we do have an obligation only to review what's in front of us, which is the worst setback.
Well, I did understand that I could present in writing this evening what my concerns were.
Oh, sure.
And, and that is something else that I really, um, need a bit more time. I've, I've just handwritten this, and I'm, I'm not sure if I'm remembering everything. I did as much as I could. Um, and, and so the, the privacy issue does come up because, uh, the second floor windows do, are much closer than they were before with the balcony taken out. The house previously set back further visually from us because the windows were located on the wall that was approximately six feet or so. I don't know how deep that balcony was, but they were further away from our residence. So, uh, if that's a bathroom window, I'm sure the Descalzos are not going to want clear paint, pane glass in there. So, because otherwise, we would have the same view that they have, which would not be altogether comfortable. Um, the other issue, though, with the plantings, I'll just say that, that what is currently existing between the two houses is, um, strictly speaking, volunteer or things that have been in there 70 years, and quite frankly, it looks horrible, um, from our side, and it really needs to be replaced.
And I think that, um, I think those are all understandable concerns, that I, that I just wish, as the chair of the commission, maybe had, had been a conversation that could have happened earlier. I just know that our purview, our purview is something that we need to address here.
Sure. And that is, that is the regrettable thing, is that we did not get a copy of the plans originally, uh, until these issues came up, and then the Descalzos brought a set of plans over. But the plans that they brought over were the ones that were initially approved and passed out to the community, but the home was significantly changed since then, at least from our side.
From your point of view.
And we knew nothing about any of that until the walls started going up, and we realized that it was quite a bit different. At that point, my husband was still living at that time, went down to planning and looked at it and realized that there had been a lot of changes made, and we had been assured that the garage and the guest room were remaining essentially the same, and thought that the plans were proceeding as they were originally approved, which was not the case.
And at this point.
Can I ask a question of the city attorney?
Yes.
Uh, what is our purview here? Are we only allowed to say yes or no on the appeal? Or are we allowed to, since the entire thing has been appealed to us, to actually make changes beyond, um, the yes or no, um, vote? Because it looks to me like there are three options here. The third is to direct staff, um, to do something.
What I was, um, trying to, um, not direct, but, but, um, inform the commission about was the limited scope of the appeal. It is, it is about the setback, so.
It's only about the setback.
I'm, I'm construing that as, um, I mean, the, the RDRC went to include a fence, um, and you, you possibly could deal with anything within that setback area. But I was trying to make a distinguish, distinguish between that and the rest of the house.
Right.
Because that's clearly not before you.
Yeah. I understand, but there's, to me, there's a couple of things in that setback area. One is going to be the roof of the garage. Okay?
I think, I would, I would say that's within the setback area.
And, and the other is landscaping along the, the fence and the fence itself. To me, those are three items that we could potentially look at.
The, the landscaping, I don't know if that, that, if the landscaping plan has been submitted and, and it's finally approved. Um, has that happened, or?
No, staff has not received a landscaping plan, and I don't believe the building division has received one either.
Is there going to be a landscaping plan?
I don't know, in this, I mean, it's, it's this, the area in the setback, so, um, I suppose we have in the past talked about landscaping, um, as conditions to mitigate against some design issues. But I'm trying to focus us on the appeal and that limited scope setback area.
Right. At this point, um, I, I feel that we've heard, um, from the appellant, and we've certainly heard her reasons for wanting to continue as well, and I'd like to go ahead and hear from the property owner, hopefully to address some concerns that have also been raised. So if you can come forward.
Could I just mention one more thing?
Of course.
I'm sorry. In the hearing notice that I received, um, on the 20th, it says pursuant to municipal court section 18.27, this notice mailed to the appellant and the applicant, "If you challenge this proposal in court, you may be limited, may be limited, to raising all of those issues you or someone else raised at the hearing described in this notice," in other words, "tonight, or in written correspondence delivered to the city staff at or prior to the hearing." And I have my list of concerns, but I'm really not quite done with it. Um, uh, and I would appreciate a couple more days to get that, um, to you, but it does not say, it does not limit what I can bring up, I'll just mention.
Thank you.
It says only the issues you bring up, so that's why I have brought up the additional concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orzum. Um, would the property owner like to come up and speak? Thank you.
I'm, I'm George Descalzo. My wife, Mary Lou. Um, we owned the property in 1937, and, um, you know, we, we tried to be real patient with this process. Uh, we were already a couple of months behind. Um, you know, our, our construction is basically, especially this wall that's in, in question, in the exact same spot, the exact same squared-off square footage. Nothing has changed about that garage. The garage is a one-story garage. I'm getting hammered away at a little bit here. The garage is a one-story garage. I'm getting hammered away at it a little bit here, and so it's kind of hard to listen to a lot of that stuff. There's a lot of inaccuracies in there. One-story garage is not 20 feet high. The request for the survey was given to her immediately upon our hearing. It, we paid $2,600 for a survey, and we're told by professional surveyors that property lines, as accurate as they can be in San Carlos, aren't very accurate, because of bushes, fences, landmarks not being able to be found on the street. So, you know, what you have is kind of a best guesstimate by the professionals, and I think it's recognized by the city. When they look at things like three-foot, two-and-a-half foot setbacks, five-foot setbacks, it's not a perfect world out there. We aren't trying to gain any property. We aren't building a two-story house on that property line. Our house was already a two-story house. We went out of our way to move our dining room window forward on our property, as to not look into their dining room window, because we don't particularly want to look into their dining room window. You know, the statement that there is a privacy issue is just, it's false. I've got seven photos here from these windows that she was talking about looking directly into her house, and all you really see are the 70- to 80-year-old trees that are growing between our homes. I've lived in the house for 15 years. Those trees were there when I moved in. They're still there. We maintain them on our side and keep them trimmed, and they look fine. I'm not sure what's going on the other side of that foliage, but that's another issue. Anyway, the construction, you know, of our house has been delayed and is costing us money. We're living in a rental right now with our family. It's much smaller than the house that we were in. We've tried to cooperate as much as possible. We've given time, extra time, a couple of different times. This has been knowledge since November 18th. So, you know, here we are, we're in the first week in January, and I think that that is an adequate amount of time to really address what has been addressed here, and that was what the RDRC discovered in their asking questions, and in fact, a member of the RDRC went out and looked at the property, and even stated that, you know, "This roof design is much better the way it is now than it was before," and because of the situation with the condition of the house, it is, was built in 1936, that yes, we approve you to build in the same spot, because we see that you're not trying to go into the property line. You're not trying to build a two-story house looking directly into a yard. If you'd like to see these pictures, I can do that. I didn't think that was going to happen tonight. I thought this was just about the appeal. There's a lot of other things being brought up here, but, you know, we've been wanting to do this project for about 10 years, and we finally got into it, and it was going along quite well. My contractors are here, if you'd like to ask them any questions. I think that might be helpful to this process. Our designer is here as well. You know, we are just trying to, you know, build a house. We're not trying to pull a fast one on anyone. We're not trying to encroach on anybody's property. You know, the balconies coming in, I mean, the frame of the house is exactly where it was. This is not, there hasn't been this great shift over, which if you've been listening for the last hour or so, you might think there has been. It's pretty much the frame of the house is right where it was when we started. So, you know, again, we're a little bit frustrated with the process. I understand the way it works. I understand why it works, but, you know, in no way, shape, or form, you know, are we encroaching on our neighbor with any kind of intention to, you know, grab land, or, you know, whether that fence is accurate or not, you know, I couldn't tell you that, because, again, we've paid money to have the survey done, and they couldn't tell us. So I think it's to the best of everybody's knowledge there, that line is where it is. And, you know, for the 15 years we were there, you know, prior, you know, the neighbor and us, we, it was just a middle, you know, access to the backyards. It was fine. So we never heard any privacy issues about the fence before. I don't think foliage would do much. There's a ton of foliage already. I think, you know, it's, if you were to, I don't know if you guys have gone out to see the property or not, but, I mean, I think you can tell there's a pretty good dividing line between the two naturally, and with the placement of our windows.
May I ask the Commission at this point, do you have any questions for the property owner, his contractor, perhaps his architect? I know that we had, we may have had-
She's a designer, she's not the architect.
Excuse me, the designer. We may have had some questions answered, a little out of turn, when we were speaking earlier about windows, but if there are any additional questions for the property owner, now would be the time to ask it.
When I went out there, it looked like Ms. Orazum's garage is right next to where your garage is, so it's actually, the garage is kind of our buffers to the houses on the, okay, so that that's the way it looks. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant or his contractor?
I was actually going to ask Jesse about the roof on the garage. Was that discussed at the RDRC? And you guys were-
We're all in agreement that the current design is probably a better design.
Okay.
Just to kind of give you a little bit of background, I guess, I'll just jump in and kind of give you my thoughts here. Everything pretty much that we've heard tonight is what we've discussed at the RDRC meeting. I mean, we're talking about design issues, which is really not what's the issue here. And we spent a lot of time talking about design issues, and I think it was probably about an hour of just talking about this one item, and it kept on going back to design issues, and what we were trying to explain is that, you know, we're beyond the design standpoint, you know, we're way beyond that. We're talking about a wall, and that's all we should be talking about. So we did our best. We listened to everyone. I do not recall the contractor getting up there telling everyone that he took down the whole garage. I know he did mention that there were some structural integrity issues on some of the foundation, but I don't remember that ever coming about, and I don't, well, you're shaking your head, and I don't remember, I mean, I was there, so.
Well, um-
And there's no minutes that are being held. They do their best to try to write down everything that people say, but, you know, it was an hour on this one issue, so.
Well, at this point, again, I agree, the conversation does need to be about the wall and the setback. However, in the staff presentation, there was some conversation about how that wall would continue to make it so that it fits with what we're approving. So do you guys have any questions, then, on just that wall standpoint for the property owner, the designer, or the contractor, before we move on to deciding the issue?
Yes. Is there a plan for that garage wall with the studs sitting there? I understand from Chris that nothing has been sort of presented on how you're going to deal with that foundation in the garage wall and the existing studs. Is there a plan for that?
Can I defer? I'm not the-
Oh, absolutely, yes. Please bring your contractor forward to answer that question. That's exactly what I was getting at.
The only plan I know is just to finish the wall.
In the meantime, I would love to look at the pictures, if you don't mind handing, passing it around. Thank you.
These are from the inside.
Great.
Hi, I'm Mr. Mason Henry Bowers. We were waiting for determination, for everything to shake out, and I was going to work with the Building Department, whatever they required me to do, that was what we would do. I'd have my structural engineer design something. We would either support the studs, remove the foundation. The foundation is not salvageable. It is non-standard. I can't warranty it. It's a liability issue. So in the past, when we've run into conditions like this, we would just pick up the wall and replace sections of the foundation. That has been the past practice. I would defer to the Building Department how they wanted to handle it. It would be up to the building official. At that time, I would have my engineer design it. We would submit it, get approval from Building, and then proceed. But I've been waiting until the appeal process was over, so we knew which way to go, what you wanted us to do, and that's where we stand on that wall. In the previous meeting, I did say that we took the wall down. We took it down and laid it in the backyard. When this issue came up, I put the wall back up. We were salvaging that wall, because we knew that we had to reuse the studs, we'll sister on. I can salvage the studs. We can sister on and add new material to it and save that wall.
So my next question would be for Chris. And that would be, if they pick up the wall and put a new foundation underneath, is that still part of the 50%? Is it the wall? Is it the foundation? When it talks in here, it talks about 50% of the wall, but it doesn't really talk about the foundation.
No, it doesn't. Historically, it's been the framing material that we've always referred to with regard to the 50%, however, in this case, as both I and the contractor have stated, the foundation is-
Is not salvageable.
Is part of the problem here, so.
Okay.
Their engineer of record would, I'd like to talk to, and we can find some way to, you know, work this out, but engineering could help here.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any additional questions for the contractor, since he's up at the microphone? No?
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, at this point, having heard from both the, hold on, let me just make sure, is that appropriate at this point?
You haven't closed the public hearing, but it's, you, you know, our policy's always been to allow people, but within limits, to-
Yes, Ms. Orazum, within a quick limit, if you'd like to say one more thing, please feel free to come up to the microphone, and then we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. From the microphone, thank you.
I'm reading from the material that was sent out from City of San Carlos Residential Design Review Committee. It says, "Conditions of approval from October 1st. Condition seven of the October 1, 2012 Approval Design Review Permit states, 'Construction of this project shall be in strict conformance with the plans approved by the RDRC on October 1. If the Building Division's set of drawings or other subsequent revisions differ substantially as determined by planning staff from the approved drawings, the entire proposal shall require re-review and approval by the RDRC.' Recently, the Planning Division was made aware that portions of the non-conforming wall were removed during its construction of the addition and received questions regarding the placement of the wall. If this wall had been completely removed, the zoning ordinance would compel a five-foot sideyard setback. However, Section 18.19.50 of the Zoning Ordinance for Additions and enlargements to non-conforming structures states that a non-conforming setback may be continued so long as a minimum of 50% of the wall remains, see D1 below. Effect to non-conforming setbacks, 'For the purpose of additions in any residential district, continuation of a non-conforming setback shall not be considered an increase in the discrepancy provided that, one, within the non-conforming area, a minimum of 50% of the exterior wall and 50% of the roof remains and is not removed as part of the scope of the work for the addition. In no case, and two, in no case, shall any existing setback of less than three feet be considered legal for the purposes of this chapter.' The City of San Carlos past practice has allowed removal of wall materials down to the studs and has further determined this would comply with SCM C18.19.50 D1."
Yeah, and we're following you. We're reading it on the report.
So you have that same material. So, you know, again, I think these have been carefully thought out by planning in the past, and certainly, I think we cannot completely ignore this and be legal in proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Orazum. At this point, please come on up to the mic.
Yeah, I think we all understand, you know, when rules and laws are written, that there is interpretation and there is consideration, which I think the RDRC has done in doing its job. You guys are doing your job. It's not a black-and-white world. If it were, half the remodels in San Carlos, I think, would be torn back down and redone. We all know there's one-and-a-half, two-and-a-half-foot setbacks. I think that the committee has done its job in getting the information, rendering a decision. The decision's been appealed, and now we're here again. I don't think we need to belabor the point of the letter of the law. I think we all understand how laws work and why we have planning commissions and RDRCs and city councils, and I think the good of San Carlos is going to be preserved regardless. So, anyway, thank you. Do you want to say something?
Well, I kind of said part of what I was going to say in going through this whole process, but I think I'd like to go back to even what Scott had said. In the end process, I'm not quite sure what she hopes to gain here. I know we're talking about privacy issues and all that type of thing, but with the lot line, but there's a few things that kind of get me here, of even saying we never got the plans in the beginning, that we didn't get the plans till after the project started. I don't quite understand those things, and it kind of boils me here, because we've been very cooperative. You know, even when all this came up, I tried to go over and talk about, you know, what is it that, you know, you hope to gain here, or want here, or whatever, and it kind of came into not really liking the design of what we do, so I feel like that's part of what's driving, and almost like they were watching and waiting to see if there was something that happened here. So, again, with, you know, I know we have these, the rules, and you have to have all these codes and things. You look at these structures, they have to be safe structures when you build them, and I believe in the RDRC Committee, too, that all this has been brought up. We've gone round and round, and end result, even if we had to go back and you said, "Okay, you have to move this lot line over. We're not going to do this." We have a small garage with a large home, which isn't really what San Carlos really wants around here either, and you look at that, it's not going to change her privacy really at all, if you go out and look at the house. We're going to still have garage-to-garage in the back, and it really doesn't change. She's not going to gain any property. So it's, I don't really know what's driving this.
Can you just state your name for the microphone?
Oh, sorry, Mary Lou Descalzo.
Thank you very much.
And the only other point was, when we were talking about, you know, the garage, as you look at it here, that was changed, and actually, RDRC liked it better. If you look back at the original design of the garage, and then look at, from the original house, the way it is, and then you look at what the first approved change was, it's not really, it wasn't exactly the same in that first design that got approved. It wasn't the exact same garage anyway. It was a change to it. So this is a change again. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this point-
We have to close the public hearing?
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much for your comments. At this point, I'd like to hear what the Commission has to say on deliberation.
First, I'd renew my motion to deny the request for continuance.
Can I have a second?
Have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. So we are deliberating and making a determination at this meeting, just to be clear to everybody. Okay, Commissioner, comments?
I feel that, I can't see where there's harm being done here. I mean, we're in a situation that isn't necessarily textbook, and the laws try to do the best they can to cover every situation, but they can't. And to the best extent possible, I think that the remedies in place, such as the wall, is probably the best we can do. They're not moving the property lines, so no property's being lost, and they're not making a land grab or anything like that. So I feel like allowing the construction to continue is the best option. I don't think that there's really any better option, other than to allow it to go.
I think you know my, it still remains the same.
Scott?
Well, while I feel for the applicant, the-
Appellant.
Appellant, I do agree with the fact that the decision that the RDRC made.
Thank you. David?
Can I make a motion?
You sure can.
I move that the Planning Commission deny the appeal of Julia Orazum and uphold the RDRC's decision to approve the retrofit of the non-conforming garage wall two feet from the property line, provided that no additional materials are removed, and the defense be constructed by the Descalzos with a style to be agreed upon by the owners of 1937 and 1993 Eaton Avenue.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I might want to get a count on this.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for your comments and concerns. We really appreciate your participation in the process.
Through the chair, can I just add that through the city's ordinance, that this, too, is appealable to the city council within 10 days?
Oh, thank you very much. Yes, there is a 10-day right of appeal to the city council. Thank you. Moving on to reports, correspondence, and general information. Item A, report on recent city council actions.
There's no recent city council actions that, you know, that would pertain to planning, planning-related decisions or things going on, so no news in that regard.
Thank you. Planning commission comments or reports? I just have one. I am out of town in Jamaica from the 16th to the 22nd of this month, so...
Must be nice.
Does the commission need to approve that?
It would not matter. Correspondence? Anything other than what was on the dais?
No, staff hasn't received anything else.
Thank you. And then finally, planning staff comments, reports, and updates on current projects.
We're moving forward, about to release a initial study mitigated negative declaration for the two new water tanks proposed on Crestview and Melendi. There should be notification sent out in the near future. I don't see that as something that's coming forward, obviously, for the next planning commission hearing, but maybe within the month of February or shortly thereafter. And I think that's about it.
Great, thank you. Okay.
I just have one more comment before Mr. Marster, or after Mr. Marsters.
Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to introduce a new associate of our firm. Kimberly Chu is a new deputy city attorney for San Carlos, so you might see her at future planning commission meetings when I'm not available, or for her to cover these meetings.
Great, thank you, welcome.
So are we having a second planning commission meeting in January?
At this point, it doesn't look like it, but I'll confirm that, and we'll send out a proper notification, letting you know as soon as we know.
And if we did, would it be on Monday or Tuesday night, because of the holiday?
It would be Tuesday.
It would be Tuesday.
Yeah. Okay. But at this point, I don't believe we have anything, but I will confirm that. Thank you.
And then there was one more, and that was the cell tower. Has that come back at all yet, or are they still working on the noise study?
They've asked for a continuance, given the shot clock ruling, and since that time, they haven't provided the city with any additional information.
Anything else? Okay, great. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.